Hello, everybody. We're so happy you're able to join us tonight. Welcome to our July ninth business meeting. Just a reminder, from here on out, we'll be recording all of our meetings. And so then when people join in online and we'll tell them that they're being recorded, but it's a reminder for those of us here in person. Jake, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, a drum, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And Quincy, would you remind us of our goal?
A board for goals, each student will improve academically each year. Our schools will be safe, inclusive, and welcoming. We will strengthen family and community engagement, and partnerships for student learning. We can proudly maintain and improve our facilities to meet the current and future needs of our students, staff, and communities.
Thank you very much. Are there any revisions to my agenda? Is there any public comment? Nope, seeing none. Moving on to public correspondence, which I don't believe we had this month, so moving on to approval of minutes. Okay, if Lee, you were not here on one of them, so it'll just be the four of us.
Maybe some.
Oh, is she online now? Um, so, uh, are there any?
I moved, we approved the minutes as presented. All second.
Moved by Quincy, second, and by Elizabeth, all in favor? That is, everybody, I'm guessing Rainy will say yes.
Bye.
Thank you. Alrighty, trustee, a student trustee report?
Uh, no.
No, not much going on for those kids, working, summer playing, hopefully. Um, it does not look like they have a W E A or W C E A update, because nobody is here in that capacity, so moving right along. Uh, facilities program update with, uh, Mr. Chad Smith. Thank you so much for being here.
My pleasure.
So, Rainy, the summer maintenance season, we should, well, we know we have fifty-one days to put everything together. Workdays. Not to count, we're less than fifty-one, that was when we started. So, it's been a pretty challenging year weather-wise, you know, you may be aware, we had some frozen fire sprinklers here at Whitefish Middle School, and also at Whitefish High School, so the long sustained cold. These are areas that would never had issues before. So, I believe it started with, uh, some frozen water pipes in the high school locker rooms, and one of our custodians actually was on site and got ahold of me. I came back and that, uh, turned into by two thirty in the morning, they had frozen fire sprinklers. But we were able to shut them down and drain them before there was a substantial risk anytime in the gym area, we have the gym floors were approximately a million dollars over there. It's three gym boards, so that was a good save, you know, and, uh, the challenging part is making the repairs above the sheet rock, so the middle school here, uh, so we had a sparkler break down on the far end of the building by the wood shop between there and the gym. Once again, we actually had a custodian on site when it happened, and I believe our back manager was also in the building. So the fire alarm went off, and we avoided a lot of damage that way. Um, pretty challenging with, well, occupied the students to repair that kind of stuff above sheet rock and that, so we, spring break, we were able to get the middle school back together and online. Uh, I just finished replacing a bunch of sheet rock in the ceilings of the high school locker rooms, because you don't really have, you have athletics. With all the activities going on, it's almost impossible, no. So, so, as of right now, we've got them under air pressure and they're holding, so that's a good sign. And the sheet rocker pairs are done and that, so, uh, in that time, what else do we have happen? Uh, a breaker failed at Muldown, the main breaker for the building. And it's what, four years, three years, so that was very interesting. We found the temporary solution until we get the new breaker here, and yeah. I don't want to, so. Yeah, so, there were just a couple of things that happened this winter, it was, you know, very active. So, uh, what else have we done? Uh, started out summer break, remounting some acoustic panels in the music areas of Muldown, sort of, kept falling off the walls, and, you know, several, you know, stuff. Got that squared away. Uh, currently, we're getting ready to replace some valves on some boilers here at the middle school, they're older. So draining the glycol out of the whole system, getting ready for plumbers, come. That's been a task this week. Made twelve hundred and fifty-five gallons so far, so a little bit of glycol.
What does vitil do?
So glycol prevents the heating room from freezing if the boilers go down. The air handlers are actually up on the roof, out exposed. So that circulates through the building and transfers the heat to the rooms and that, but if your boilers ever go down in the winter, and then you just have water in there, it'd be in real bad shape. So, yeah. It's kind of similar to like all your car, you know. It's very similar. Uh, fountain filters, striping valve filters, we just finished, there's twenty-nine of them now throughout the district, as we've upgraded over the years with the new Muldown and the high school and middle schools fully, we're all, you know, the lead water testing stuff. So, that was just finished, we do those once a year. All the little bottle filler stations and that, they're all okay. Um, Muldown is getting a motorized cafeteria line next week. And that was, uh, like the sanitation foundation, you know. So, I don't know if you've got the experience that, they have that beautiful big window in the lunchroom, but if you walk down that hall at the wrong time of day, and the hall is concrete floor, it's like, you hit the high beams and, so, so getting a motorized shade, which should really help, you know. And that'll help, they have a video screen in there to watch a movie, but at times they're unable to see the screen because of the sunlight, so naturally good, but.
Too much.
What else? Uh, we're getting ready to start the grounds of HVAC service, you know, I did the locker area at high school. And I hope the forest fires stay away, you know, but, yeah. Holdout canterdome playground, so a lot of wear and tear, lots of little kids running around, kind of wore the grass down to the dirt almost, so we started out, we topped it with the rest stop, so they'll overseeded it. And, uh, through the construction process, that one time, they were supposed to have poured concrete curbing underneath the fence, but that got by engineered out, and they put little river rocks. Yeah, you look at some river rocks, river rocks are gone, they pulled them all out and they put plastic strips and replace underneath the fence that you can mow right up to. So labor savings and maybe a couple windshield or something. Yeah, that's pretty much in a nutshell, it's going on right now.
Sounds busy.
It is. Just commenting on something that says Chad makes light of a lot of stuff, and it just, but it just highlights how important his role is in maintenance and upkeep of everything. He's meeting with us, you know, night monthly to review, you know, where we are, maintenance, sort of the history, prioritizing things regularly to adjust to what's the focus at that time, and then, then also responding to things that do occur, and those are big events, like, wow.
Right.
He's up here for hours and hours in the evening, weekends, uh, dressing issues, that power outage at Muldown, probably one of them.
Yeah, it was below the earlier out there.
Time, we were close on the edge of, oh, what are we gonna do with Muldown?
Right.
Are we gonna open or not?
We'll.
We opened.
Thinking back to the old days when you had shell of the roof, but you were dealt there for hurries of being cold.
So those kind of things happen, and, and that's just highlights the importance of maintenance, appreciate all your work.
Chad, how many, um, like, people help you, or do you have, like, what's your team, how many?
So, Jill, recently, my long-term assistant, Aldia, has retired, you know, so that's people, I miss her, he was awesome. Um, I have two people.
Okay, that just, and then because the custodians are off, right, for the summer, so you have, like, so you have a crew of three.
Custodians work, but they work for each building principal, so, for building, so that Ethan needs a little better, so, yeah, I just have, I have two full, I have a boys here around.
Okay, so you're a team of three.
And, uh, like, the summer painter position, nobody put in for, we've been about this fourth summer, I think we haven't had a painter, so that's why I do my spare time, run around with paintbrush.
Can I find me add to this? Although, uh, not only Chad's team is very lean, there's an absolutely minimal spending on overtime. I've been watching that department over the years, and I don't know, I don't know how you do it, all of you, but thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you and your team so much, and all you do is just unbelievable, and that's stuff that you don't think about, I guess we're lucky because we don't need to think about it, because it's taken care of, but as soon as it goes awry, everyone's like, well, what about this? So it's great that we're in that position, so thanks for being so thorough and conscientious, awesome. Yeah, we appreciate it so much. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Forty-nine days left.
When it comes to like that kindergarten wear on the, is that normal?
Right, yeah.
After four years, that's the normal amount of gray hair, yeah.
Yeah, I get that from other schools, too, call me and ask me, you know, hey, what do I do about that?
That's just been more, tell them to sit down and not have recess.
You could do artificial turf or something, but the cost, like, uh, our football practice football field is a really good example, it gets utilized by so many different programs. Muldown uses it, everybody never gets a chance to rest. It's warm, so, you know, football's out there practicing.
Year round, full summer.
Yeah, so.
I wonder about, hey, you made me think about how we had sort of a mild winter with snow, too, I think that dirt, like, the kids were out there.
Yeah, and have the snow. And their boots.
So off the track every spring, you know, and it was early this year, we probably always get strike him on the spring break.
Yes.
Yeah.
They don't have practice in the gym.
Always changing. Yeah, thanks, Chad, have a wonderful night, see you. Stay cool. Whitefish High School academic expansion and athletic improvement update with Mr. Means.
Yeah, so we'll be holding our, our next, um, informational session regarding the academic expansion and athletic improvement bonds on Monday, uh, this coming Monday. So, um, we are, um, but we have a new, uh, slide deck here that I just shared with you, that just highlights some of the things that are occurring, and our goal is just to keep, uh, this information out there, and then update, um, all of the Whitefish voters as much as we can. And so we're sharing this information on multiple platforms, Instagram, Facebook, as well as our own website, as well as, uh, having some of these posters put up in areas around the community, so that we can keep people informed and know where they can go to ask questions, so this is a latest slide deck, just kind of highlights some of the things we're focused on in a little bit different way, but, um, as you can see, um, you know, it highlights that we're looking at really two big changes, that academic expansion and the athletic improvements. And then, um, of course, this has been our goal, it's designed to meet the needs of our students for the next fifteen to twenty years. And then, you know, we utilize this language about, uh, that captures this concept, really, I think, well, and that's really what we're trying to create is space to learn and room to grow for the future, and both in the, in athletics area, space to play and room to grow as well. So if you look at some of these, um, slides, you can see the, we're focused on those additional classrooms and labs, expanded culinary arts program and those things, and those are highlighted in our posters, and we've talked about those as well in the past. You can see that we included in this our enrollment, and you can see how that, I, I think it's important to note here, too, that you can see that October enrollment at the high school, and you can see how it goes up and down. But what we're, what we're really watching, as, as you do in statistics, we're watching the trend line, right, we're trying to see, okay, what is that trend line? Um, and so that one, is it a two point seven one? And, you know, the high school, and it continues to, to grow, we could see some fluctuations in that in the future. Where it comes down just slightly, or it goes up a little bit slightly, it just all depends, but what we're really focused on is that trend. And that trend line is on that upward slope, and that's why we're above that six hundred capacity. And if you take that trend line out further, that's what this next slide looks at. You can see as you go out five years, seven years, and the projected ten-year growth rate, based on that, uh, approximately two percent growth rate, you're up to close to eight hundred students in ten years. So that's why we're here, you know, that's really kind of captures that concept of why we're here, talking about, uh, what's needed for the high school. And then there's a district-wide one, too, as well as you can see there, there's going to be ups and downs, but we're, again, we're focused on what is that trend going forward? And that's been hovering around that two percent trend district-wide. I think one thing that we've talked about before that we really got to focus on and share with the public is we may not see as much change at the elementary level of maybe Muldown, but what we're, what we're really seeing that change is in middle school and high school, especially high school. Uh, we're going to be seeing some big numbers in the next few years, we may be fairly consistent coming up here, but the following couple of years after that, it's really going to grow fast, so that's something to watch closely. And then, this focuses on the learning environments, the hands, enhanced learning environments, the impact on student learning, support for career development, enhance student safety, so those are some of the big key concepts for the high school, and then we've got that aerial view that's included on our informational posters. And then, um, adjustments to the, um, athletics based on feedback. And then you can see some of that information, then ten lane track and field, district-owned football field. Some information related to that. And then, um, we've talked about, it's a leased football field, and there's usability issues with the track currently, because we can't use it for some specific events, and so we'll talk a little bit about that in our information sessions. Uh, focus on, but these are really more modern and cost-effective facilities, enhanced safety and usability. And this concept of long-term viability. I think we're trying to get that across, really what's viable for our future, for our community, so. Um, and then talks a little bit about the growth in our high school athletics related to that athletic expansion or improvements. And then again, that poster that we've seen before, that gives a little bit of a visual of where those, that expansion will occur. Um, a chart of the financial impact, which, or I think this chart really captures it well, and you can see it clearly there, um, some impact there. On assessed value. Sorry about that, it's harder to use this in a PDF form, and so then, just that approximately two percent annual growth rate. It's emphasized again, expansion will focus on CTE program growth, new and expanded programs for the the building, as well as improved safety and security. Man, it's really hard to move. Um, voting information talks about August twenty-eighth day, is the mailing date, just trying to emphasize that with people, because that's another concept, I think, you know, we've talked about September seventeenth, but that's when everything is really due, right? At what time? Alright.
Eight oh one, not eight oh one.
Yeah, and then just encouraging people to vote, so this was the slide deck that we'll be using to discuss information at our next meeting. We'll update this slide, too, as we move along and continue to address, um, the needs as well as the, uh, the areas of focus of both bonds. Any questions?
Comment?
Yeah.
Much better. Thank you, this is just.
Nice.
Professional looking for present dates, very, very good. The question, however, um, if I were in the audience, I didn't know anything about this, and you just went through what you did, I would ask you, what, what, in what way are we improving, enhancing security?
Yeah, well, we will go into that for sure.
You have answers.
We do, it's both.
I don't need to hear it.
Yeah, this does not capture every. Yeah, that's a great, great point, and that's a question we get, so that's great.
Um, I have two question, yeah, two questions, I guess, first of all, I'm confused a little bit about the flow of this, I can't figure out if we start with the academic and then go to the athletic and then go back to the academic?
Yeah, and it ends with the academic, just kind of at the end there, but we could put those back up at the beginning as well, yeah.
Um, it's just kind of hard to follow, I thought, and maybe it's not when you're presenting it, but just looking at it, um.
I think it's trying to capture the overall at the end, but, but I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, okay, yeah, because like the program expansion really should like, I think, kind of be part of that slide, like seventeen, eighteen, the building, program expansion and improved safety and security should really go, um, I would suggest.
That's a good catch, I cut that, I thought.
Yeah, I thought the same one, I was like, wait, what do we have? It's like, oh, it's like a little summary, but is it, okay. Um, and then when we talk about current athletic facility issues, on slide eleven, I would argue that we have more than two, and two doesn't seem to show the need. So, I think we should at least have three. I mean, there's about eighteen, but only showing two makes it, those just, I mean, the leased football field obviously is a big one, but I would say, like, we don't really have stands right now, or we have stand issues, bleacher issues or something like that, because that's really important, whether it's the ADA issue or even at, because we actually have bleacher issues at both facilities, at the track, the current track and at the leased football field, we have a bleacher issue. So that is a big piece of our current athletic issue, so I would like to see that as a bullet point, because at the same time, that's a bullet point of why we're doing this, and that's something that we're adding, and we're trying to sell that, so we need to explain why it's an issue.
Accessibility, so.
Accessibility, or, um, I mean, there don't, there aren't any, really at the track, right, there's very few at the track.
Bleachers.
Bleachers.
Yeah, yeah, there are a few.
Few, there's a few, and the ones at the football field are dilapidated and unsafe, unsafe. Yeah, so, I mean, and then, so I just think it'd be good to have that be a bullet point, it looks better, I think, to have three bullet points and two, two's like one, ten million dollars for two bullet points? I don't know. Huh?
Six point.
I'm sorry, six point one.
Well, there's, there's quite a few, there's more issues related to all these, for sure.
I was rounding.
I appreciate the feedback, and we can add some to that.
Yeah, I just think it looks better with three.
Yeah, but the, like you were saying though earlier, too, this is not to capture every point, it's to capture some, but yeah, I agree.
Yeah, things are better in odds.
And I don't know if it, like, when you did a hundred thousand, is that, those are the set ones always, I mean, there's.
That's what you're supposed to use, I think.
That's why, yeah, there's no addition, because very few people in Whitefish fall into any of, I mean, is it worth adding for nine hundred thousand dollar home on that or not at all?
With nothing required.
Okay. You just have to add the two together, right?
The only problem with this, this thing is that, and this is the same problem every time. Most people don't think in terms of the assessed value of their property, and I wonder how many people at this table even know the assessed value of their property.
Right.
Right, and so they, they, they look at this and they say, oh, I know that my home, my Realtor, my home's worth twelve million, you know, ten or a million two, so I have to double that.
Yeah, should we say tax property value, or, I mean, it does say down here, but.
At one point, there was a, a link that you can click on, and then you can see what your, yeah, and it had to be, well, if we have a link available, yeah. Exactly, and it was really helpful, so I wonder if you're within the PowerPoint, could it be possible based on property value that you could click to see what your, your tax assessed value property is? I think a hundred thousand is super helpful, because it's easy.
Right. Multiplier, yeah.
I think, is that on the ballot, too, where it also says, the thing about the renter?
Yes.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, it'd be interesting, I don't know.
That's in our, the renter, actually, is in our other information we sent out quite a bit, and it's in the resolution, when they vote, for sure, but.
So I just know, like, people who rent and their landlords, I say, if you vote for this, I'm gonna have to up your rent. And so, yeah, it's an interesting, yeah, an undrum, to say, like, well, would they really, you know, but it puts its, yeah. And so then the conversation is, well, it would be ten dollars a month that they're raising your rent. Right, so it would be empowering for the rentee to hear, like, it's not as scary, okay, yeah, like, well, maybe I still would vote for it, because there's a lot of renters now in downtown, you know, and so, like, if you and they're, they're high rents, right, already, and so if they feel as though, I care, yeah, I don't know, it's just a thought to think about how to capture that, education needs to educate a renter. Yes, this, you, you don't own your property, it may go up, and this is, yeah, how much, like, it impacts, so, I mean, they could do the math, too, I suppose, but it's hard if, if you think about, like, yeah, I don't know, yeah. Sorry, Dave, for giving you a lot of feedback. But certainly, even if they passed on the a hundred dollars a year or whatever, you know, what would that look like to a renter, it'd still be like, oh, well, I could a month, or what, you know, whatever, so.
Take away the unknown.
Right, I don't know, just a thought, but I, I love this, I can't agree more, like, even if you don't show anything, I think it's so, so easy to read, and I love all the colors and the flow, and it's great.
I also love that the logo inside the track.
Very cool, yeah, I like, I mean.
Who knows, Steve, whoever.
Yeah, I really like the color scheme, I have to say. I like this paper airplane. It is.
Great.
Yes, lovely. I don't know, I mean, I know the other part is to, like, yeah, when you're talking, I'm assuming part of the PowerPoint when you're, is talking about accessibility, ADA.
For sure, uh, a lot of this, yeah, you bet, there's definitely some things we can add, that, that's, but it doesn't, it it's, I think it's designed to have less detail than some of the other things.
Absolutely, yeah, which is, I feel like that, it's not so busy, yeah, yeah, it's, it's.
But I do, I liked the additions you, everyone has recommended, and maybe we can work with that tax assessed value a little bit, and maybe a link, that for future.
And even I want to figure out the link on the website. You know, like, if people come, and then make it real accessible.
And, yeah, we don't need all the information there, there's a link, so someplace you can find what your tax assessed value, most people don't know, you don't have to buy it, right?
And it's a funny, it's like catastrophic mapping, it's not like tax assessed property value, it's not like a nice, easy, it's a funky word.
Yes.
Um, and conceptually, market values, yeah.
That's a great point, alright.
But it really is beautiful, it's so pretty.
Yeah, we'll look at the sequence a little bit, too, I think that's great feedback, we'll make some adjustments to it, but, um, yeah, this is the, the latest slide deck, anyway.
Thanks, so have you, just to clarify, have you been doing this with Christian Trow, or has this been with marketing, or just you, like, how has this been working?
Um, Hatton Lippman.
Okay, the marketing book.
Kind of looks like marketing.
Like, you know what they're doing.
Yeah, and they've been helping us with the, you know, the, all the informational components of what's been being shared recently.
Great, and even on social media, I've noticed, and like, then the color schemes are all the same, and so you kind of see it, so you just try to notice, and it's like, not the same colors, everything else, I kind of like green, yeah, gray, it's just like, definitely so clean. It's beautiful. Cool, thanks for covering it. Thanks, Dave, that's a great, um, update.
Uh, I have a question. How are you gonna deal with parking? I, I feel like that is also an issue, yeah, it's a great.
Or the building for the athletics.
Uh, for.
Like during school.
Yeah, during school, I mean, this year, there were multiple times I had to park off property, I had to, you know, walk from my house or something, because there wasn't parking.
Yeah, there's definitely, that has come up, for sure, and what we've, we're looking at here, can you see on, have you seen that poster? Link, it's on the, on the link, there is the academic. You click on that one, and you open it up, you can see, I've got, hold on, yeah, um, basically that. Um, basically that, that front area from high school would become part.
Oh, so that whole field would all be parked?
Hmm, okay.
Which is kinda sad.
Yeah. There have to be trees.
There have to be trees.
There's more than that.
There's more trees than that, yeah.
There's another area that's near the field that would be changed and you can see that on the other poster as well. So, uh, there would be some additional parking factors.
Good question, Jake.
Yeah, that's a great question.
And then are you making the annex obsolete to students? We're no longer going up there anymore?
Correct.
If it passes.
This assets and built we would then, uh, move everything in there. Annex would be, there's a variety in our long range facility plan. There's a variety uses for the annex. Could be used for, and it has to do with growth of this building or mold down or, or both. So, uh, the district office could move into that area, which might be necessary to accommodate growth of this building. Um, also, mold down, we could put a, a grade level there if needed, I think, if it continues to grow. So, uh, we have uses for that space too, as we watch enrollment, as we grow each of the buildings.
Alright.
Have you had to walk to the annex?
Uh, yeah, I have a, I have a few classes out there this year and then speech debates out there as well.
What was your opinion of that experience?
Um, it sucks in the winter. It was my first class, so it's every morning I was walking down there. And then you're not allowed to drive. Uh, one of the street users that the vice principal would actually patrol the road. And would pull you over.
Oh, to drive to the annex?
Gotcha, okay. Gotcha, okay.
She'd pull you over. Yeah.
That's awesome.
No.
It wasn't terrible though. People complained about it more than they should, I guess, but.
Everyone survived, but not I do.
Yes.
Not I.
I just can't, I just, right.
It's absolutely hysterical. Like, I have to take more time to get in your car, drive around than it does to. Um, I would just like to acknowledge, this wasn't in our slide deck, but it's fact, there's this beautifully done poster.
Yeah.
It's a great summary.
Yep.
Um, this is nice. So I don't know, do we have this on our website for access to?
Yep.
Okay.
It is on the website. It was posted on our, uh, news announcements as well. Um, it's also available, it's our flyer, basically.
Our flyer, okay.
Flyer can be used and handed out anywhere, share with people who have questions, and it has a QR code on it. People can access information that way as well. And again, it's on our website too. And then, um, the posters, you know, we could share those out with different groups and that are interested in, just sure people are aware. That coming vote.
Awesome. Jake, have you guys, um, are you on student council as well?
Hmm.
Have you, um, has there ever been any discussion about doing any sort of, um, like carpooling? Or, I know like it's challenging cuz people are coming from different houses and they have different things to do after school, but I didn't know like, you know, they do, like, you bike to school and if people get an ice cream cone of mold down or something, that like bike to school day. Has there ever been any sort of, um, advocacy from student council to try to get people who are, if they're in walking distance to walk to school? Or, um, carpool if you have a neighbor or anything like that?
Uh, no, seriously, like rewarding carpooling or walking. No, we haven't really ever brought that up, but that's.
It'd be an interesting idea to see. I mean, I know, I, I do know it gets challenging for the multitude of reasons, usually after school because everyone's going different directions, um, but maybe worth entertaining.
I have to say, I also think, cuz I was talking to some other students, but it was sort of the layout of the schedule. It's interesting because people are going to internships or you have to go home or you have to like.
Campus pass to retire to leave.
You have to leave.
Right.
So.
So that's kind of a.
I think a lot of students use their car as like a locker.
Yep.
Like all your stuff's there.
Yeah, someone really uses their lockers, pretty much your car. And then everyone goes to different places for lunch as well.
Right, the lunch thing.
Campus, so that's.
Kind of a culture. That's it. Cuz I remember asking like, why the lunch thing is, is tricky to me, like, I find it tricky.
Yeah, the parking lot's dangerous.
Yeah. And everyone having lunch all at once, like I think it's just a very interesting setup, so. I think that is actually more the challenges than.
Mm-hmm.
The schedule, a little bit of the schedule itself.
Do you guys have a schedule in high school?
No.
No.
Yeah.
I mean, we know the block schedule, like who's in what period and that sort of a thing, but your day-to-day operation.
Yeah, I just heard they were changing it again next year.
Um, so we are not, that is not our vote.
Got it.
We just make sure you're in school for the amount of minutes and hours you need to be and the rest of it is up to your, um, administrators.
I love hearing feedbacks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Dave?
Yep, this is great. Thank you.
So great. Um, our twenty twenty four MTSBA Montana School Association Annual Meeting Electronic Ballot. Lucy, which you introduce this for us?
Uh, thank you. And, uh, this section item will be presented by Rusty Hens.
Thank you. Um, so when I got the call to action saying, will I present this, there was a link attached to it, which was the, um, some supporting documentation. And it is, I noticed when I read my packet yesterday that it is not there and at that time it's too late. So we're going to have to, I'll have to sort of refer to that because I do have it. Uh, this was the packet that we were presented when we met. And it outlines the changes, the, the things you're voting on are more closely.
It is in there if you scroll down. If you click on the item, if you click on C and then just scroll, so if you go, I don't know, I mean, here.
Right.
And then either Survey Monkey, it's right here, or Instructions for Voting, Article Seven, um.
So clicking on Survey Monkey, and I have that up in front of me, and that is where we answer the question. But it does, still does not give of the details.
The detail of every.
Their detail, it's like it had, like it had the language like we see in a policy where some of it's yellow.
Red line.
Oh.
Yeah, but that was in there and it's not now, so.
That's interesting.
I will be referring to that, but unfortunately, I can't.
I apologize, yeah.
Yep, no, that's, I should have let you know that it wasn't there, but it was too late. It was.
Yeah, it's alright.
So, um, so a- a- anyway, mostly it's just some changes in language that, that are referred to here, um, that, uh, we will, we will be voting on it. I'll do my best to, I'll tell you what that says if you would like to know, but, um. By and large, these things are, um, pretty innocuous. It's, um, there were some, uh, some amendments made by various districts to change the language and these are not. This is not a policy exactly. This is the, the direction for Lance and the crew to take in what they advocate for. Basically, it's, it's, it's giving them directions as far as what they do. The, um, one sort of important one that. Uh, isn't listed separately, it's just asking about the changes, but one sort of important one is the, um, that they are. Directing them to preserve the ninety-five mils. So this comes from what would happen, several counties decided on their own because we were seeing such an increase in property taxes, that they were going to back off to seventy-eight mils for education. Whether it's supposed to be ninety-five mils, this is part of the equalization from way back, this is part of, and a law that was passed. And that's when they went to court and MQEC and people that went to court, um, MTSBA has a seat on the board of it. And, and TSB, by the way, the Montana School Association, we know that. For those who don't know, MQEC is the Montana Quality Education Coalition. They are the people who brought the suit that brought about school equalization. And so they are the ones that took, took to court, the counties who only withheld seventy-eight mils and. Got ninety-five mils reinstated and then, ninety-five mils. Anyway, that, part of this, uh, vote is to ask them to continue to advocate, to continue to support MQEC and to continue to keep on the counties to, to maintain the ninety-five mil, keep with the lawsuit which hasn't been settled. So that is the, uh, the gist of the. Sort of important thing in there. The rest of it is, it's, it's kind of just, we clean up language and some little bit different language. Uh, one of, one of the proposals came from Columbia Falls School. I don't know who the other one came from. But like I said, they're pretty innocuous. I'd love to present things to you, but I'm not gonna read them. So any questions on that that I can answer?
I'm still curious. The gap analysis resolution, is it a gap analysis of MTSBA? The gap analysis of public education in Montana, where are they looking at?
Which one are you looking at? Number what?
Seven.
Oh, initially adopted in July twenty twenty three.
That's what you're talking about.
That is what I was just talking.
That's the assembly, cuz that's.
Yeah, right.
That's.
That's the mills.
Yep.
That's what they're.
That's what they're doing.
Got it. Thank you.
And so what they're asking us to do is, is indicate separately and I'll let our clerk fill this out, but. We should probably vote individually or do we wanna vote as a whole on all of this?
Well, I don't have opposition to any of them. Does anybody?
Yeah, nobody does, but probably the most efficient thing to do.
Yeah, to just vote on the all.
On the whole.
Yeah.
Alright, then that's what I would, uh, unless there's any further discussion.
Thank you, Shannon, for doing that.
Yeah, thank you very much. Sorry, we, um, messed up our. They're losing. Sometimes I feel like MTSBA's emails get really funky with all the replies and the things and the reminders, so.
In this case, unfortunately, it's a really well put together book, which I encourage you to look at. Was our meeting book, like our meeting packet. It was just like, for once, it was like, wow, I can follow this. And, uh, and it was, you know, uh, for, for a guy who likes policy, it was awfully clear. For people who don't like policy, it would be ice legs over time.
It might be for the best though, that it's not, cuz sometimes they get tricky about posting their real.
They do.
They do, yeah.
So. We trust you.
Yeah, that's right.
There, I will say this from the time that I've been on a school board and I've been involved with MTSBA in one way or another, a lot of that. They've gotten so much better. Just from the, the way they present things and the technology things and we used to get policies that, um, were just frankly, I tried to break. That, that we, we used as our model policy. And I don't mind, I don't mind ever hearing you say that.
Right. It is, we're very honored.
It is, if we don't have them anymore.
We do not use them for policy purposes, for those of you who do not know. One of the things they have provided is model policies that we go through our attorney to get, so. And, hey.
Thank you, Shannon.
Yep.
Um, so does it look like there's any opposition? Are there any questions? Any clarifying questions for Shannon on, on any of this? No, thank you so much, Shannon. Um, I guess since there's no public comment to be had, is there any impact for a motion or, uh, or discussion?
I will move that we accept all the changes as, as, as we approve all of the change.
Okay, moved by Shannon, seconded by Katie. All in favor?
Hi, thank you, Rainey.
Awesome. Thanks so much. That's a great thing to get off the, check off the list of things to get done.
I, I apologize. I should have mentioned this again. I was a little out of order now, but. One of the things that I do wanna commend them on is that they, uh, because of a motion by the board, they, um, they have done what they need to do so that we will not see dues in that year. And that was, that was, I guess.
Awesome.
Nice.
Okay, the big Kahuna of the night, the preliminary budget for next year.
I'm done. Straight out of London. And the buzzword is preliminary. So really, the biggest meeting, the biggest budget meeting is in August. Uh, no, thank you, thank you, Darcy. Um, I would like to begin, uh, uh, a brief review of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year budget, uh, by, uh, looking at the four, forty-page document and just looking at page five. That's the page with those graphics showing the different fund structure. And the reason why I wanna go over this is that we, uh, we have some, uh, new, um, new people both in the room or online who may not be, uh, familiar with the way, uh, uh, budget fund, uh, fund, you know, fund budgets are structured in a public school setting. So this will be a nice introduction and for the rest of us, it will just be a refresh. Uh, so the trustees of the board are required by law to adopt an official budget for, uh, the funds that are in, that are listed in, uh, in green. And the reason why we have to adopt an official budget is those are tax levied funds. They're supported by property taxes from the law. The funds below, uh, in, in blue are funds that get funded through other means and, uh, their budgets, uh, are, uh, limited to the cash balances in those funds. And the trustees do not have to adopt an official budget for those. So this is just a little introduction. Uh. I also like page six, uh, which gives us what I call the big picture. We look at the big picture and ask ourselves, how does this coming year budget compare to the budget that we just spent down? Okay, and you can see that, uh, between the elementary and the high school funds. We're budgeting, or the preliminary budget is twenty-six million four hundred and one thousand dollars, nine, nine hundred and eighty dollars. So ninety-six point four million. And we like to look back and say, well, what was it last year? So we can, you know, we can get a comparison. Uh, the twenty-three, twenty-four year budget was at twenty-five point one million. So, an increase of approximately five percent. Okay, and the increase of five percent comes from many, uh, different funds, uh, or funding, uh, sources. Uh, the most important funding increase remains, uh, the incre- increased enrollment. And the funding we get as a result of that from OPRP. Uh, so between the elementary and the high school, uh, we got over six hundred thousand dollars more in funding based only on our A and B. Average number below. On top of that, uh, the community, uh, approved, uh, an additional levy of hundred and eight thousand dollars for the house. The other increases, uh, have to do with the needs of those specific funds. Uh, the usual areas that, uh, see, uh, annual increases remain about the same. It's the special education expenses are going up, repairs and maintenance, which are subject to inflationary increases which are higher than everything else for some reason. Uh, we, uh, recognize that the extracurricular activities need more funding to be allocated to them. You remember what, what, uh, Chad's presentation was about? You can see that even the best plans, sometimes there are surprises in them. And we know that as far as public schools go, we have one of the best, newest and best maintained, maintained facilities. Yet we still get surprises and those are sometimes costly. All the, you know, technical stuff that Chad was explaining. And we can, uh, budget for it, which we usually do. Uh, eh, by, uh, by cushioning the maintenance and repair budget, so set surprises if they do come. We have money to cover them. Okay? So this is just the whole picture, uh, uh, and one more thing about the whole picture page. If you look at about the middle of the page, to the left of those two pie charts. That's a breakdown of the general fund alone. The general fund is the main operating. The general fund is the main operating fund of a public school in Montana. And within that fund, we like to look at expenditures by function. Are we spending this on students? Or are we spending this on repairs and maintenance? Or on debt service or on extracurricular and so on and so forth? Now going back to our goals. And objectives of the district, number one customer is the student. And as you can see, both in the elementary and the high school, instruction related expenditures. Represent the highest piece of the pie. As would be expected for a public school. And then the pages which are many, seven through forty. Represent. The best estimate at this point in time of what those actual line items could be. Uh, the final budget will be presented in August, as and as you know. Uh, some of the items may shift a little bit, however, the budget as a whole and the total amount budgeted for each of those funds. Will not change, and that's really what you will be voting in in August. Stop right here. Do you have any questions? So far or? And I know it's a lot.
I have several questions, can I just blow them out? Um, first of all, this is as always, thank you so much, I know how much time this takes, and I know there were some curveballs thrown, and so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, when will twenty three, twenty four close, when will we have that actual?
End of August.
Okay, so this one, it'll close and we'll basically vote on this one likely, and we will see. Do you feel like what you're showing here for the twenty three, twenty four budget's fairly?
That's where the budget currently was.
Okay.
Uh, as far as the actual numbers, I honestly don't think I would be entering them in the spreadsheet. Because I would have those actual twenty three, twenty four numbers until the end of August.
Okay, I'm just curious, yeah.
You know, it's just, yes, so the way it works is. In governmental accounting, we have what we call two different bases of accounting. A cruel accounting, which is common throughout other organizations, and then we have what's called modified accrual of accounting. We in public accounting, we follow full those accounting laws. The modified accrual says that up to sixty days after the year end. Those transactions count the prior year. Okay? So it really is not possible to close out promptly the prior year. Until we see all of those transactions.
That's okay, I was just, I was just kinda curious what it was.
That's what it's.
Okay, that's, I I don't have any questions, I'm just more wondering what I think.
And and you may remember from last year or from the prior years, I would sometimes would show those actual numbers for the current year, but there were many notes saying. Well, the current numbers are not really final yet. And I thought showing numbers that are not fine doesn't really make much sense. Uh, and that's why we see all the budgeted numbers for prior year, for the prior year and what it's gonna be this.
Okay. Made one note, I can't even figure out what I meant. Um, my next question, if you go to page six again, when we talk about the general fund by function. It looks like the business administration is all being drawn to the elementary fund, is that just for balancing then?
That is, and I had to do that last year as well, and it is strictly in order to balance the budget.
Right, I figured. And then I just noticed when I was going through like line items, when we were looking at. Teacher salaries, the increase from the prior year was like showing like seven percent to almost like nine percent. But when we voted on a three percent, is that a three percent rise, I'm just curious how that value got so inflated.
That's a good question. I always think about it too, and then I double check and triple check my numbers to make sure, is it really that much? You have two things in it.
Okay.
One, no, three things, the three percent increase. Approved during IB, yes, but on top of that, you have to roll the step increases. See that, suddenly right off the bat, you can have five to six percent.
Okay.
When you give teachers three percent, it's never a flat amount. And the additional difference is either through moving people around. Or people resigning and retiring and new people coming in, and everybody makes a different dollar.
Okay. So if you have more senior staff, it's just gonna be.
You know, we, for example, lately we've been hiring people with master's degrees. Almost across the board. So this, it's a very, it's it's a moving target, and that number will would change throughout the year as well. As you have unexpected resignations, you may have people on FMLA. Family medical is due to a long term, you know, absence. You get substitutes in their place, they make a different rate than the teacher, so all of the above.
Oh, no, it's okay, I was just like, how is that so much higher than I anticipated seeing it, which so that makes, thank you very much.
And it's something that every, every year when I look at it online. Is it really that much, and and the answer is plus, I have to account for. Hmm, some unexpected changes, so there is a little bit of cushion there in each number.
But then health insurance is its own line item, so that's not included in the teacher salaries, that's additional?
No.
Okay.
And health insurance, again, health insurance, you would see throughout all the forty pages. Fluctuating, sometimes the budget goes down, sometimes it goes up as people are getting on and off health insurance. Uh, this year, thanks to the change we made to Cigna effective July one. More people enrolled in health insurance because of lower premiums. We got quite a few classified and some certificanced who enrolled in health insurance. While they didn't, couldn't afford it before. Right off the bat that. Those new folks cost, let's say, six thousand dollars more a year, you have ten of them, sixty thousand dollars. Which we did find in the budget, and we're happy to open those up.
Thank you, okay, I have one last question, this might be a hot topic, and I'm not trying to make it one, I just noticed. When I was going through, there was a huge. Increase, it looked like in either travel, sports? And I'm just curious, and you might not be able to answer this. Obviously, just the cost of fuel, everything's gone up, I don't know if that's included in this. But I'm just wondering, is there ever a point where we have to say we can't afford to send you to absolutely every game or meet? Or is there a requirement to do so? When you look at what, you know?
I I hear you.
So I just was curious, um, transportation really seemed high? And then oddly, soccer must be included, boys and girls are always together, cuz boys' basketball and girls' basketball are separate?
Yes, so some sports are together, uh, some are separate.
Okay.
Uh, for for accounting purposes, honestly, I don't know what the logic was behind it. Uh, it's been, it had been like that always.
Could we change the header to soccer, boys, girls, or? All gen, I'm, just so that you know it's not, and and because you have boys' basketball.
Oh, 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 yes, I could certainly.
And wrestling is boys and girls, that way you just know it's soccer, boys and girl, when you're trying to, if you're trying to make a comparison.
Right, you would think like, oh, we're only offering soccer to one, not the other.
Not the other, that way it's just real clear. And I, I mean, and I'm not picking on anybody, but like you said, like soccer's boys and girls cost the same amount as volleyball. Which is only one for girls. And then like speech and debate is a really expensive activity, and I just was curious if there's ever a point where we have to like. Trim them down in any capacity, I don't know if we can do, but I was like, whoa, I mean, that's sixty percent of our budget.
Okay, so you had really two questions.
I had a lot of questions.
So this one question was question A and B subsection. So transportation costs, is it up? Yes, it is. And why is it up? It's up, now, when we say transportation, we mean the busing. And other travel expenses include hotels. As you all know, hotel costs are not getting any cheaper. And meals that we provide to the kids while they're traveling. All of this is going up and up and up, not only in cost. But also because we have more and more athletes. And other students participating in activities. And the majority of the activities are very successful. And they, they advance such as speech and debate, you notice how much money we spend in speech and debate or or band. And all these activities, which is a good thing, are very successful, and they do advance to more and more competitions. The second part of your question, is there ever any point that we would have to trim down, I hope not. I hope not. The the, the activities are partially funded through ticket sales. Now, ticket sales don't. Don't apply to all activities. Let's say, speech and debate doesn't pay a ticket fee to go and watch the debate. Volleyball, football, soccer, and and so on do. So those ticket fees do support those activities. General fund takes the, takes on the majority of the expenses.
So now this might be a real hot, I'm sorry, go ahead Shannon.
Uh, I don't wanna jump off.
It's, well, I was just gonna say, is that a fair use of? General fund dollars when it's not, it's a chosen, not everybody can play. Volleyball, football, soccer, you're cut, you know, it's not open to everybody, so when we're spending that much of the budget, it's just nothing to think about, you're spending that much of the budget. On something that's not available to all students. So I'm just saying that as a general taxpayer, I guess, and somebody who sits on a sport and says we're spending all this money on something that's really not equitable.
I wonder if that's the industry standard.
It's for public schools, you, you are required to fund activities, they, yeah.
It is a part of our responsibility of the schools to provide an opportunity for a participation expense. It, like you said, and. While not everyone gets to play, the opportunity to try out and participate is there, and that's how sports have been. Generally, uh, didn't be determined, yet you're not required to provide sports for every student. That is true.
Yeah. I do wonder like what the, I don't know the answer to this, what the industry standard is, like, do all schools pay for all travel? Or like, we started the fifty dollars student activity fee, right? So we, yeah, and I wonder, yeah, across the state, is it always the ten percent of the school's budget, or whatever?
Right, goes, or maybe what they are within.
You know, like, might be interesting from a comparison point.
Well, I agree with you completely that I think you could consider. Donations that were specified to. Additional travel for students to attend additional experience.
Which like the bad kids did, remember, when they go to New York? Kids did that.
Right, or ticket sales is a great example, good use of those funds too, to to support additional costs associated with something. Or maybe donated funds for. State travel or something like that.
We also live in a state that is not.
It is, it's a great question, cuz the costs of travel are, I mean, if you think about.
Yeah.
Just the food, well, it's just amazing.
Yeah, I mean, it just really stuck out, and like I said, I'm not necessarily trying to pick on it, it probably sounds like it, but it was just like. Mind blowing to me to look at the increase in the cost.
And.
In that respect, and then thinking about like the whole picture of it, it's.
I, you you know, yes, it is mind blowing to me to. But I've been watching the activities, expenses. Going up, and it's a trend, it's a trend, it's not a fluke. And for the last few years, I would always think, oh, this is up by a lot, well, hopefully it's a fluke. Maybe next year, we won't go to as many championships and it will go well. And that is not happening, so I think I have to forget about that concept, because my five year trend is showing this. And statistically, we have to look at trends. I would like to add, add to both of what Darcy and David say, you touched up on equity, Darcy, and I think the equity. Is in the fact that it is offered to all. The fact that somebody doesn't wanna participate and play the flute. Okay, but the choice is there for everybody.
And I guess I would say that.
Equity in that.
They, but they might want to play and are cut from the team, and that's to me where the inequity comes in. So they are given the opportunity, yes, but the inequity comes in that, you know, it's not actually open to everybody, cuz you can only have fourteen kids on a team. If you're not one of the top fourteen, that's where I, that's where the rub is, I would say.
Is it true that each season there's a no cut sport, like there's cross country in the fall and track in the spring, so like something tennis.
Any of our athletic.
Right, so they're always, I think their H season, there's athletic opportunity that's a non cut.
Though I would imagine, I don't know, I'd have to look at it, because most of ours are not cut. Uh, but interestingly though, it's a good point, because we're growing in role, and we're growing in.
Yes.
Especially the high school, so and what we're seeing is growth in this area as well. Um, which is creating conditions where some places we might need. To keep within a budget.
Yeah.
Right, so it's it's an interesting dilemma, we're we're balancing that.
Yes, it's, you know, all the academic and athletic success that's celebrated in the community is great. But this is impact though. So. And to add to what Dave brought up about the donations, I'm just gonna clarify that. The sports, all the sports and all the activities also have their separate fundraising accounts. And that's the accounts that we call student activity accounts. That's a completely separate cash account. In. The school district does not. By definition, own these accounts. That's not, that's cash, that's not included in the cash sheet that I show every month. That money is not there. We're only. The stewards of that money. And when asked to use that fundraising money for some purchases, we do so. However, we cannot. Introduce fundraising accounts. Unless we're asked or permitted to. In total, all these accounts add up to about three hundred thousand dollars. That's student activity funds, they're somewhere. And some funds, you brought up the trip to New York, so. The band, was it band or art or instructor, I don't remember, some fundraise, they go out actively fundraise and use the money immediately. I E the New York. Some keep fundraising and fundraising and keeping the money in the plant. So every program is a little bit different, every program has its own, what do we call advisor or coach? So every program is a little bit different, uh every program has its own, what do we call advisor or coach? Uh that is is in charge of that. When we, when the business department uh gets a purchase order and we're told, hey, this. Uh these hats. And stickers and jerseys will be paid out of the fundraising accounts, we do so, otherwise we pay them out of the budget.
And that's because typically when they do fundraise, they fundraise for specific item.
Yes, and there's there like a. Something that the school is has said in the past, we've guaranteed we will take care of these line items. We will always pay. Coach's salary, transportation, meals and lodging. Or anything like that, like is there, have we?
No, I could, it's implied.
Providing the sport. Activity.
Okay.
You you know, uh it's implied, just as it is implied that students get their curriculum and books. There is nothing official saying.
Okay. What's the district is required to pay for? When offering the sport versus. Okay. Fundraising dollars might need to be start start being used for. To help offset some of these lodging costs, cause they're getting. Or something, I don't know.
Okay. There is no provision currently uh to to.
Okay, and I'm not trying to cut any sports, I don't still wanna clarify.
This conversation very much because it not only shows me that you read and went through the budget. Uh carefully, but it is one of the highest increases. If you look at those, uh you know, change from prior year. Uh we're looking at a sixteen percent increase and that's a conservative number. I hope the actual expense will not be more than that, but I wouldn't be shocked if we. If it, whatever, when we sit here a year from now. Thank you.
Can I, I'll I'll act as it just now, just like to go on to that because. I had the same question she had about the boys, girls, like, oh, boys, girls, soccer.
Yeah.
But I was curious because my understanding is like cross country, we paid for one but not the other, correct? Is that accurate? We pay for both boys and girls?
We pay for both.
We do, okay. So all those ones.
If it's related to title line, I thought. I think we took it both in when we added girls wrestling, then boys cross country got.
Is that what it was?
I'd have to check, but I think.
Cause there was a weird thing and so I was just. They were like hitching a ride. It was the girls wrestling and boys cross country.
Yeah, it was interesting.
It was a strange thing. Okay, so that's how that worked out. Thanks. That's what I was like, I never something vaguely, I feel like that. Thanks, Shannon.
And then just pointing out that like we just talked about, the wrestling being getting added, but there's not. Baseball's on here, there's swimming is not on here. So there's multiple sports to go to your point that. Our bulldog that we are, this has come up several times in the last year, much more so I feel like than the years prior. That are not in our budget.
Right, so we call those sports school sponsored, but not school funded. Okay, okay, so we sponsor, then we say, hey, we do. Have an interest, we 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 do want our kids to play baseball. But we really don't have any money for. Here comes the best baseball or. Non fraud in this, whatever. Yeah. That's why they're not in our budget.
Yep.
Otherwise the budget would be.
Pertinent to this conversation and your explanation of it. Is it reflected or can it be reflected? The monies that come from non general fund deeds in in our budget. In other words, can we see? This percentage of football is general fund, this percentage is.
I I could do that uh as a report.
Yeah.
Yes, I could do that as a as a resort.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think it belongs here.
It doesn't belong here, I agree with you, but yes, absolutely. I can.
I mean, that just might be helpful if it ever did come down to deciding, alright, you gotta go.
Yes. Um would you like me to have it ready for the August meeting?
I would love it if you. With the budget.
With the budgets will have a report. Okay, I'll do that. Any other questions?
I just have a clarified question and I'm probably just looking around because I'm scrolling and scrolling. But the gifted and talented program. It's not, is it, is it, it just happens to be on page. Twenty-three, twenty-two, I think, actually, um is that, so is that? Just for the high school or just happens to fall under the high school?
It's in both elementary and high school.
So I didn't know we had gifted and talented in the high school, which is all right, I'm stupid. I thought it was just middle school and elementary.
We we do get. We do get.
AP is is under that? Okay, thank you for clarifying, so I was like.
Seventh and eighth grade. Advanced courses as well as AP at the high school.
So seventh and eighth grade advanced are under gifted and talented at high schools. Budget.
No, I'm sorry. High school is AP. Seventh and eighth grade is are the advanced courses.
Totally.
And then case six is seven.
It's a separate, okay, fish, they go fish that, that's what I was remembering about that in preschool, so please, okay.
Any other questions for Lucy?
Oh, I really. I have one and it might be. But I just wondered, okay, so as number that we talk about in IBD a lot. Is the number from the statistical report from the superintendent that says ninety percent of our budget goes to salaries. Right?
Ninety percent of the general fund, yes.
But where did, how they figure that out? He has like, did they, that all up from this, and then also when you say like. Sixty-three, sixty-nine percent goes to instruction, do you have all the salaries sprinkled in throughout all of them?
Uh the the way they figure it out is. The way they figure it out is that when I close the fiscal year, it's of June thirtieth. And make those final financial statements that we talked about, that I do in August. I do it on uh in the OPI plan.
Okay.
Where I have to report everything, essence, liabilities, revenues, fund balances and all that, that's how they.
Cause in that you reported salary, yes. But that's not in, it never says in here.
But if you add up instructions, support services, general administration, building administration, business administration, you're basically at ninety percent.
So are all those salary costs, cause also we have.
Well, you'll see that not all are, you let's say you you'll see. Uh phone expense. You know, and curriculum software and 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 all the others, so no, not all of it is.
No.
Yes.
It's more like the salaries are sprinkled in throughout all these different.
And that is right.
Got it, okay.
So no, OPI receives this document or our internal documents where we do budgets. But they look at the final financial statements that I submit, that's how they.
Okay.
That's how it gets to the state.
I thought the same thing, I just did that, I just added it up and made up my own answer.
Yeah, yeah.
Here's this much more official, Katie, good job.
I guess I do have another question, but. On your, on your beautiful page five with the. How come, this is again, I'm just a dumb question, sorry. Like food service is only under high school, is that?
Because that's where it lives from an accounting standpoint, uh that's all it is. Uh you you know, uh it doesn't mean that, oh, the elementary and middle school don't get food service. It is, but the food service lives from an accounting standpoint. Under the high school, that's all.
So maybe it comes out of myth, the lady is in it, I just was like, I don't understand, okay, great, thanks. Anybody else? Thank you so much for such a huge budget and balance.
And and you know, you look at the night, you would say, okay, I have seventeen million dollars to allocate, this is so much money and.
Done in an instant.
And it's not.
Well, it's not all here.
Right.
I mean seventeen million, when I'm talking about uh the general fund only.
Right, um I guess we didn't talk about your message, which was really well. That was like my highlight, I meant to say that, so thank you for that. It was such a nice little summary. So thank you.
And I was like, oh, I wanted to know I read that.
It made it all make sense, so thank you so much. And it does. Stress me out about the building, you know, you did a great job of explaining that. Yeah. Yeah, it's that that tip fund piece really well, is there ever opportunity to recoup that, is that ever coming in? No.
We didn't need it up uh uh a few years ago when those sunsets sunset and we were told a result, no. More than once.
Yeah, blame us for asking.
How about throw that three percent to or I mean.
So no, that will never.
I didn't know people take turns.
Right.
Yeah, everyone else will get on city council next. Alright, just joking, uh thank you so much, Lucy, that was amazing. So thorough as boys. Um I'll add to Dave for uh personnel recommend recommendations for hire.
Sure, so we're we're busy in the hiring season, we have more coming at the next August meeting as well, but so. Recommendations for hire. Um there's some work positions going into next year. Um you can see, one of those on here is a point five, and that person was already with us. And so, but it is a hire because we're extending that person's day to a full time day, so. The next meeting too, well, in our superintendent board, I'll share some of the transfers that have occurred too, because there's a lot of transfers that occur in this. At the end of the year, going into the next year too. Yes, a big, a lot of that's happening now as we speak and then. That creates some openings like this, so these are the recommendations for.
I guess, that is a question I have, like, how, I mean, I know there's still lots of shifting parts, but do you anticipate there being? Full, when school starts? Or do you have any sense of that?
Uh I think we'll be fully staffed, uh with a possible exception of one of our special education positions, it's really hard to fill special education. That's the structured learning behavioral specialist kind of position and that's uh. We'll keep monitoring that, watching that. And if we can, we'll we'll adjust and and utilize our special ed staff differently in our model.
Same for staff, like parents and things like that, I feel like.
Yeah, and and I was gonna say classified staff, I think that's a hard one. Watch that closely and hopefully fill those positions, but that's one that has me a little bit worried as we start.
Question, any other questions for Dave?
Actually, I have one more.
Oh, yeah, go for it.
Just because I don't understand the language of temporary, long term substitute. Temporary, long term, like what's that definition?
Well, the reason that temporary is in there and I think you were.
This is why, it's familiar, yeah.
We changed some of the language to make sure we define temporary employee and made that very clear in our country space bargain agreement. So. This is emphasizing that, this is a temporary position. But it's a long term secretary substitute, it's not like a general substitute position that we typically. Recommend for hire, which is those positions are uh someone who comes in for a day or two. This is someone who is gonna be uh there. I can't, I can't remember.
A certain length of time, though, correct?
It's longer than typically, if we go longer than. I think in this, there are thirty-three days, I think it is, so. So for example, uh maternity. That would be long term.
And that is the most common uh reason why we hire one of those subs.
But the definition evolve rate was because this also then opens them up to like if they would get holiday days or vacation days, right? With different language, so this is part of that.
Changes what they're eligible for.
Right.
Compensation as well as insurance and those kind of, so.
Just kinda wanted everyone to just like that was a big conversation point at IDP for.
And temporary was the key word, I'm guessing, well, there was.
Yes, okay, there was different understandings of the word, I think, too, it was differently within the contract, different ways, so it's confusing, yeah.
Yeah, we actually, it was quite a bit of clean, the the language around temporary or short term and that kind of language was throughout the contract. Cleaned it up and made it one definition for a temporary.
This is the first time I've actually seen it written out, it's like, ooh, that does still seem weird.
Poor Chris has got a lot going on behind their. But like during a Saturday night, like.
It's that's why I bet it means something different, it's very confusing, anyways, just putting that at different. It was a big thing.
Well, that's good to know what you guys did. Are there any other question? Ready for a motion? Or um more discussion? Unless you wanna ask the audience. Moved by Katie, seconded by Quincy on paper.
I. Thank you, that is everybody. Uh moving on to out of district students. Dave.
Okay, we're. Yeah, we have four students uh recommended for approval and um. These, we will try to make sure we identify what schools they are in in the future. Um but these were spread out amongst the buildings, so. I think two of those are involved now. One middle school, one high school.
Thank you.
Is that normal, is that a normal number?
Well, you know, in fact, I don't know how often we did this at this time of the year, so um this is an unusual. To do it, so where we'll see a lot more of these in August, September.
It's. Can you remind me what we decided to do for our time period? Are we open all year?
Yeah.
Yeah, and all all the, all schools in the district are. I mean, not the district, all schools in the valley.
Correct, all schools in the valley are doing that, although we set times for if you want to be. Enrolled for the entire year and you wanna start the school year with us, it has to be by this next August.
Okay. And then if not, you would come in at the semester.
You would come in.
Get a grading period.
At right after board. So if someone wants to begin the school year with all of their peers, they would have to be on the next floor.
Right, cause the next one's not till September.
So then in theory, the high schools should be prepared if they get in flux for scheduling in the fall. Because they would know about.
Correct.
Unless I guess they're all moving in, then they're not transfer students and it's just, is that accurate? That would be the potential for chaos.
I think, I don't know how many people know this, so I'm a little worried that it's. We're gonna be going into September, you know, I hope not, but that's been the pattern in the past where the people show up. So.
Yeah.
We'll see, uh and so we might have that for September meeting and have to approve a bunch of all those kids out of school until like.
You should be talking to all the things in real estate people and saying, you should tell me the people. Yeah, they gotta get registered, here's how you register for.
But this is out of district, so it's.
Right, this is different than that, but it's curious.
Yeah, I think it's really interesting, cause actually it's a good point, last year. You know, looking at our numbers, it's, okay, this is what our numbers look, it's it's really, you shouldn't look at numbers right now, because enrollment. Have no idea, cause last week we were really surprised, we had a bunch of. August, September, so um you never know what's gonna happen and. Uh I don't think many were out of district, but that could have an issue, we don't.
So I guess the more of the stories we live and learn from last year, so we're prepared to.
They're they're ready for.
We're battling down the hatches this year, yeah, okay. Sounded stressful for all, everyone involved, both sides, but it sounded very stressful for people, so not how we would like to start. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the agenda item as presented.
That's okay, moved by Elizabeth, seconded by Quincy on paper.
I.
Thank you, says everybody, Lucy. Um. Down to reports, uh. Trustee announcements, are there any announcements going on? Well, I would just like to get. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I saw, I'm gonna be going to. The. Let me get this, it's sped law, that's.
Civic Health Institute Special Special Education Law. So I'm going to be going to a conference in September to study um or to learn about. Law and policy around special ed. Policy won't just feel to me a lot. So hopefully I'll come back with. I didn't know it's something. It's in um. Not Seattle, right outside Seattle.
Much better than the others by your invention.
I mean, I hope it's not a prison.
Okay, I just I think I've mentioned before, that's a really good conference. Well known lawyers. That are there to speak about law and it's great.
I'm looking forward to it.
The friend of Shannon's alley. Great spot for him.
So thank you. Um. Anything else? Well, I was trying to help my friend navigate an issue with um Council public. Well, it wasn't an issue, it was a question. I shouldn't say an issue because I'm selling goes bad, but it was a. Question with Council Public School, so I was on their website today. And I know we've been sometimes frustrated with our website. But like as a school member, I feel like I'm fairly adept at figuring things out. I could not find their policies. It took me like fifteen minutes to figure out where their policies and they were hidden just in early board docs. So it wasn't like an extra. Policy button. So I thought that was really interesting and it just made me feel better about some of the frustrations we've had about ours. And then they had a link to a different policy. It was about um. Out of district non-resident students and it linked to their policy from two thousand. Uh or two thousand and six. So again, it's like, oh, good. We're not the only ones that struggle with getting all the pieces of them. Because there's so many moving pieces and targets and anyways, it just gave me, I don't know. Pause that we're not always alone when we feel like we're. Anyways, I emailed Sue Corrigan. I was like, just FYI, I don't know who to email at your district, but. Considering there are massive changes to this particular policy, you might wanna. Change it and that's your main link. But anyways, it just um was ironic. It's just weird. It's talking about out of district students and. All the things, um but yeah. Right at home. Better our messy house.
You speak to the websites?
Sure, um I'd love to. So in exciting, speaking of websites, we are working on a website redesign. Um that should be out by in September. Okay. It's the goal. So it'll be a little bit more streamlined for. It'll it's gonna kind of be like the whole marketing thing. It's just gonna look so pretty. Yeah, so interestingly enough, though, I had asked Jacob to poll. How many people use and it was only like six percent. It was actually a really small number of. Mobile. I know I know.
Have you tried?
Well, yes.
That's the opposite or pretty much the opposite.
It is. It is. You're right. That is probably true. I just thought it was interesting. Um because I was like, is this gonna be? How is this gonna be on mobile? And he said, oh, he said it will. He said it will work much better. And then anyway, so we've had a great discussion about how to design it, what to advertise. The district site will. Highlight all the schools and then each school will have this kind of a section of highlighting their individual. Building a principal's message um easier to well have some when you first pull it up, it'll be like four or five. Quick links, so like. The calendar portal. We had a long conversation about calendar. And what calendar and how to link to the calendar. You know, combining, you have the high school calendar, but then you have my have kids at another school. So how do we make all that flow? Um so that was probably a forty five minute conversation on just calendars and linking calendars and it was. It was lengthy. Um but yeah, so it'll be like a link to your what the student. Portal, what do we call it? Infinite campus and a calendar and maybe like food menu. So each school can customize it. So right, so the elementary school might have the food menu as a quick link and. So it should um hopefully, but at the same time, it's reminiscent. Of what we currently have, so it's not gonna be a complete. Relearn um for reeducation for everybody.
Yeah, the group that came together. Administrators joined us in that conversations. Secretaries in the buildings as well. Really, it's a refresh of it. It's not a new website.
So that's perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, everyone involved for.
Yeah.
I have a question, I guess. Is there for scheduling work stuff, uh a board retreat? Is that something that we need that?
That is our August work session. I'm gonna be on the wrong calendar, but guess our August work session.
It's August twenty first.
Yes, and we were trying at the.
We scheduled it. Five.
Which is a Wednesday.
It is a Wednesday, yes.
It the schedule gets so challenging. Yeah, five. Yep, school board work session at five.
So.
On Wednesday, the twenty first.
Yes.
Trying to keep it to the evening. If there's a preference to doing it. They we certainly could do that, but.
Evergreen does. They do. There's like six A L. Sometimes that might not be bad.
But I know some people are working, so we wanted to make sure there's.
We were trying to give us more time that we could address or just discuss more thing. And um so yeah, five o'clock on. Till midnight, yes. So you moved it from Tuesday to Wednesday because of the people participating is accurate.
That was because of the account.
I remember that. Thank you for. Perfect. Anything else? All right, Dave, it's on to you.
Okay. There's these event calendars in here, so you can look at the calendars. That don't look on your phone. But uh. There's not a lot of those event calendars right at this moment, but as we go into the year, we'll be picking up speed for sure. And then, you know, a lot of some of our activities start. August, so it's not too far away. Um some events that are coming up here close soon, though, um our administrative team will be going. I think. About two weeks from now, we're gonna be going to the. Um School Administrators of Montana Conference Leadership Conference. It's a great conference. They've got some really. Good speakers coming this year and it's focused on. Um climate and community engagement. So it'll be a great. Opportunity for us. We've invited Dana Remley at our M T S S court here to join us as well because of that concept. So. I'm excited about that. Because in and I even looking what is our safe. So our school will be safe, inclusive and welcoming. That is the main point of one of the primary speakers that we'll be spending a full day with. So. It'll be really nice to get some information from them and what promoted as best practice for the lyrics. We're looking forward to that. I also have in here that just I wanted to comment, part of our strategic plan. Was about communications consultation. So. Uh it was about communications regarding internal and external communications. And making sure we have the resources and effective uh systems and supports to to communicate effectively. So um we've engaged with Darlene travel as a consultant to help us. Have that conversation. She um plans to engage with stakeholders to talk about. Our internal communication structures, our external communication structures, structures and look at that whole system. To reach out to the trustees, administrators, staff, um fans. Um in a variety of what. So we're looking forward to that. We've set that up with Darlene to start really right away up. Right, as we begin the school.
Was that the same thing when we were talking about looking at systems and we also talked about looking at P L C and M T S S? Was that different?
They kind of are in overlap with. So we're gonna have someone separate to M T S S and P L Cs. Because there's real expertise in that area that I think we wanna. Focus in on. Um our darling can do that as well, of course, but I think. Well, they overlap a lot for sure. So yeah, I think when she looks at our systems of communication, she's given. P L Cs are one of those. So our M T S S teams are. But uh the M T S S consultant can really look at what's your next step in interventions, strategies, supports for students.
Right.
And same with P L Cs. What's your next step in P L C development in terms of addressing student needs? I think it would be more a student lens.
Also, what Jake brought up earlier about schedules, that would be interesting. Like how schedules are determined and what that that communication looks like and.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good part of that system. That's great.
Yeah, we're excited. Um and and we all know Darlene. I think she knows our district well and we're excited about that. She'll give her a head start and. Um and 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 I think it it takes someone with uh coming from a larger district that has experience of larger systems. To to kind of look at system of of our size to to say, okay, what could happen next? So um it's all to that consultation.
What's the consultant, speaking of schedules, that I forget his name. I'm sorry. He also kind of.
I said Tom Watson.
Yes. Yes, cuz he engaged with us about the scheduling thing, kind of similar, right? Getting information from stakeholders and then meeting at like some of the people at some of the schedules.
Yeah.
Just wondering if she would also talk to him, because I do feel like, again, they're all sort of all communication.
Yeah, he she could. Yeah, that's a great point. I'll write that down as a suggestion, cuz. I mean, they work closely together for many.
It's like they already know each other, I'm guessing. And just so many of those conversations about scheduling seemed like a lot of it was about misunderstanding. Corner culture kind of things within the buildings and then building to building and all those things, which is.
Yeah, no, I think it was great discussion. In fact, I think. The great example of a good structure to to provide opportunities for communication.
Right.
Which Rob did through that process. So I think uh but yes, I agree that. Could be a good.
He might have insights for her.
Yeah, that's great.
Right.
Issues this district. Well, thanks for initiating that conversation with Elena.
And I'll come to you in the future too. I'm still, there's. A handful of consultants in the M T S S and P L C area that I think are. Be good candidates. And I'll keep working, looking into those and I'll discuss those with Darcy as well and. And we'll bring something to you in the future. I think there there are people really specialized in that. So I'm I'm looking forward to those.
That's great. I feel like now is the perfect time because P L Ts are about five years old, right? It's like a good time to look at that and next steps. So. Yeah.
I agree. I agree. And we've done that before, definitely with M T S S. We did it in the past where we looked at our structured systems and they. Evaluated them on a rubric, gave us, okay, this is where you should start your next steps in that process. But it's time to come back to that as well for M T S S for sure and and as well as.
That's great. Thanks, Dave.
Lucy. Okay, uh June financial report. And all those or most of those pages have the. Uh clause that's saying end of year numbers have not been finalized. Uh because they haven't been finalized. And because they haven't been finalized. I didn't attach the seventeen page uh budget to actual for the general fund because. There was no point in doing that. The only thing I wanna bring your attention to, if you could please go to up to page one cash balances. And going back to our conversation about those uh student activity funds. If you go to the bottom of the page, under total funds, health equation bank. You see that student activities account? And flexible benefit account. That's the money we talked about, the flex uh the student activities account. Four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. You can go a little bit down. Start now.
There you go.
Okay. And the four hundred, the one that are. I had said three hundred thousand. Well, it's really four hundred thousand. That's the money we were talking about. And as you can see, it is held separately from. From the funds held and the county pressures. That's what we were talking. Thank you. Um so those um. The the only numbers that are uh uh actual. Good numbers are the S R funding spread uh pie charts uh page two. We have less than a hundred thousand dollars left to spend, which all that will be spent in some. And all the other pages are just preliminary numbers. At this point.
Thanks, Lucy. That's right where you wanna be. Right, with the funds expiring.
Yeah, it's timed to the last dollar.
Actually, like, it's so amazing. Like, it is so amazing and.
It's it's teamwork. It really is teamwork.
And they're not half the flip like some of your districts did, but still spend every dollar like it's just. Navigate the bed.
It's teamwork, you know.
Yeah, they could do that next time at the science thing that um they were talking about. Like have to fill a bucket with water and poke a hole and figure out you can have to get this whole bucket of water out in five minutes. Yeah. And it would not on five minutes. Thank you, Lucy. You did an amazing job. Uh consent agenda. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? That's to the fore. Moved by Katie, seconded by Quincy, all in favor?
I.
Yay, thank you, Rainy. Oh, one more. Sorry. Second. Moved by Quincy, seconded by Katie, all in favor?
I.
Thank you, Rainy. We hope you feel better.
Oh, thank you.
Any great quotes in the paper? About the bond?
Well, thanks. Yeah, it um it was fun to meet with Kelsey and um actually I got my staples out today and I'm on cruise control. Driving next week, maybe.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
I have one question, Dave. When is graduation? Do we know?